Meeting to order. I'll let you know to those of you who have not been here before what the procedure is. We have a number of items on the agenda and with respect to the conditional use permits and other hearing items, we'll first call upon staff to give us a report following which questions may be asked by members of the commission of Mr. Brown or anybody else who may be appearing on his behalf. Following that, I'll call for the petitioner or the respondent, I think there's one of those tonight, respondent that is, to either give their, what they have in mind or alternatively what their response may be, following which there may be questions asked and after that we'll open the floor to public comment, first for those who speak or have something to say on behalf of the petition and then those who may have something to say in opposition to it. Keep in mind that you should not talk amongst yourselves, any comments should be addressed to the chair and only from the rostrum and if you're gonna be coming up to speak, please give us your name, address, and then go ahead and launch into it. Joan, will you call the order or the roll call, excuse me, I should say?
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Enstead?
Here.
Commissioner Poppins?
Here.
Commissioner Albers?
Here.
Commissioner Hogan?
Here.
Commissioner Pashby?
Approval of the minutes, you've had a copy of the minutes of the January 19, 2021 meeting. May I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
We need a second.
I thought I did.
No, I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Enstead. Alls in favor say aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. Approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections, Mr. Brown?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign, motion carries.
I'm being motioned.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe we had a motion for the agenda.
You're kinda all over me tonight. Did we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second Hogan.
Move a second, the agenda be approved, alls in favor say aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. Opportunity for public comment, not involving items on the agenda. If anybody has anything to say for the good of the order, for any reason, not to include items which are on the agenda, please feel free to step forward. Hearing or seeing none, we'll go on to the public hearings, the first being application RRZNE 0103, 2020, a change of zoning. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. So this first application is a petition to change the zone property from the C Commercial District to the I-1 Light Industrial District. Subject property is located at the intersection of County Highway 140 and Interstate 29, or this better known as the Fairview Exit. Subject zoning again of the property is currently C Commercial. This property was part of a 63-acre rezone approximately 2004. Subject property, all subject properties are developed except this adjoining property to the east and like zoned. Subject property is currently, the applicant for this is Long Creek Steel LLC. They operate business on this property. Over the years, the property's been improved. Currently, there's a complex of approximately 97,200 square feet of structure that is utilized for light manufacturing. This was a shot that was taken of the property. So the petition is to rezon this 11.25 acre parcel to I-1 Light Industrial. Staff has been in contact with the applicant. There are plans to improve on the property, add to the existing building. When staff looked at it, we addressed that the property's currently zoned C Commercial and the use there is I-1 Light Industrial. So the applicant submitted a petition to change the zoning so that future additions to the property would be in conformance with the zoning regulations. As part of the staff analysis, you saw staff's analysis of the, that this property is future zoned, or future land use would be rural commercial industrial area. All adjacent properties have been developed except for this property that they own, which is item number two on the agenda tonight. So we don't feel this will have an impact on surrounding properties and as well it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. With that, staff does recommend tonight that you would make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to change the zoning of this parcel from C Commercial to I-1 Light Industrial. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff at this time.
Any questions of Mr. Brown? Hearing none, it asks the, is there a representative here of the petitioner? Long Creek?
Yes, sir.
Could you step forward, please?
Yeah.
Give us your name, address, and your relationship to?
George Hofer.
Long Creek LLC, Long Creek Steel LLC.
I'm Mr. George Hofer and my home address is 28502 465th Avenue, Lenox, South Dakota. And I'm the president, part owner of the company.
All right.
So we outgrew our Lenox facility and in 2011, we built the first building. In 2015, we added on warehousing and now we're at the point where we're ready to burst again. We need, we need coil warehousing to protect our, to protect our customers, basically. Cause like right now, with steel being as volatile as it is, I don't have room for nothing. I can't, there's, there's projects that are booked into midsummer already and I just can't protect my customers without having warehousing floor space. So how do you, how do you do business that way? So we're at the point where we just need more addition, more warehousing. So I talked to Mr. Brown earlier and he recommended that we rezon to Light Industrial as we're growing, so I took his recommendations and that's what we're, what our plans are.
That's why you're here.
That's why we're here, yep.
Anything else?
Nope, that's pretty much it.
Any questions of the gentleman? Hearing none, you can go back to your seat, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'll open the floor to public comment. Are there anybody or is there anybody here who would like to say something on behalf or in favor of the petitioner? Anybody against? Seeing none on both, close the floor to public comment and entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Move to approve?
Albers, I'll second it.
Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Albers. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Scott?
Aye.
Commissioner Enstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Albers?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Motion carries. Thank you, sir, you're free to leave if you're so inclined or you can stay on and enjoy the, oh, you got the second one, I'm coming up, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Toby. I was trying to get you out the door, but you gotta hang on for a bit.
So this next? This next property is the same area at the intersection of 29 and County Highway 140, again the Fairview Exit. Again, this subject property is just to the east of the property that we just had before us. This property is currently vacant, it's not improved, but it is owned by Long Creek Steel LLC as well. And again, the proposal that Long Creek Steel has is, and that will come before us at a different date, but they're proposing to expand operations and essentially cross, I think the last time we talked to George was across this property line, which that'll be changed at some stage in time. But the purpose of this is to make this like zoning to what's current, what the zoning's proposed change would be on the property to the west. And again, this is a vacant field that was there. As you can see, staff identified in the staff report that the comprehensive plan does guide this property for rural commercial industrial, so it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And again, all adjoining properties as part of this development are currently developed, so there shouldn't be any impact on those adjoining properties. And again, what I should have mentioned on the other one is that this property is fully encased within the building, so there is no objectionable materials or anything stored outside. None, none of the operation will be changing with the, with the change of use of this zone. So again, staff does recommend, that you recommend approval of this change of zone to the County Board of Commissioners. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Any questions of Mr. Brown? Seeing none, the call to petitioner back or the petitioner's representative? And this is, probably goes without saying, you don't have anything separate apart to say about this.
The same guy that was up here earlier.
Feel free. Pardon me?
I'm the same guy that was up here earlier, George Hofer.
Okay. So, any questions of petitioner? Seeing none, you can take a seat. Open the floor to public comment, anybody here got anything to say in favor of the petitioner? Seeing none, anybody in opposition to the petitioner? Again, seeing none, close the floor to public comment and I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Move, Scott, that we approve?
I'll second.
Seconded by Enstead. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Scott?
Yay.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yeah.
Commissioner Albers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Poppins?
Upstain.
Commissioner Pashby?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Now you may leave if you're so inclined. Item number three, application for a conditional use permit, USC 0001-2021.
This item before you this evening is a petition, an application to transfer one building eligibility. Original parcel summarized would be northeast quarter except Waringly addition and tract A and section 19 township 100 north, range 51 west. It'll be transferred to lot one and tract two of Heronymus addition, which is right next to it. Subject property is just to the west of the city of T for vicinity wise. Zoning of this property is A1 acre cultural, all surrounding properties are like zoned or A1 agricultural. This picture on the screen shows where the transfer will be, so there is one eligibility in this large portion here that will be transferred to this portion here for development of a single-family dwelling on the property. This was the site right now. This property isn't currently improved, it was recently just replatted. So in meeting with ordinance requirements, staff did review the application, it does meet the requirements as far as ownership and contiguous relationship and it does meet the standards for there are other developments of building eligibility in vicinity. This development shouldn't have any impact on surrounding properties as well. Let me jump that up there. So as part of the staff analysis, staff does recommend approval with the findings and conditions that are shown in the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Any questions of Mr. Brown? Seeing none, hearing none? Is the petitioner present tonight? Mr. Weddering? There are two Mr. Wedderings, well, if you're both are here, we only need to see one of ya. Yes, please. Give us your name, your address, and tell us what you have in mind.
My name is Drew Weddering, my address is 1508 South Campbell Trail, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57106. The only thing we're planning to do is moving a water eligibility to build a house on that plot.
Delmar's your father?
My grandfather.
Your grandfather, he's the owner of the property?
Owner of the property for the water rights.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Weddering? Seeing none, thank you, you can return to your seat. I'll open the floor to public comment. Anybody here would like to say something on behalf or in favor of the petitioner? Seeing none, anybody against? Again, seeing none, close the floor to public comment and entertain a motion. Come on, folks, it's cold out.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Move, Scott, that we approve?
I'll second Hogan.
Move a second, that we approve the petitioner?
I would second with the conditions, of course.
With, with the conditions and the findings of fact, I assume?
Yes.
Correct. And was a second to that?
The second by Hogan.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yay.
Commissioner Enstead?
Here.
Commissioner Albers?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Upstain.
Commissioner Pashby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number five, application for conditional use permit, USC-0112-2021.
Aren't we on number four?
Did I skip one?
Yeah, I think we're on four.
Excuse me. Application for, item number four, application for conditional use permit to allow motor vehicle sales, display, and service, OO4-2021.
Okay, this application again is for a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales, display, and service. This property is, is located in the southwest industrial park and it is approximately, if you can see on the screen, it's approximately 350 feet to the west of T city limits. Subject property is zoned I-1 Light Industrial, as is all subject property surrounding it. Subject property again is, is, has been improved with a 15,720 square foot building. A conditional use permit was issued with that building to allow for a contractor shop and storage yard, so those are the only uses are allowed in the structure. We did receive information from Stephen Newell, he's a leasing of one of the suites in the building. He is the applicant for this, for this application. And again, the request is for motor vehicle sales, display, and service within the suite and adjacent to the suite. In the staff analysis, you can see that staff does feel that this property, that use for the property shouldn't be impeding on other properties within the area. Again, it is a conditional use, it's allowed within that district. And so staff does, get back to that part there. So staff does recommend approval of the petition with the findings and conditions that were listed in the staff report as shown on the screen. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Questions of Mr. Brown? Wendy, questions?
No.
There being none, call the petitioner to come forward, please.
Stefan Newell, 4905 South Emma Lane, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I am the owner of the dealership that I'm trying to run there.
Are you running one right now?
Technically for my grandparents, but they are retiring and I'm moving on, so this is.
Or moving in?
Moving on, so.
On the property?
Yes, yeah, yep, so I, it's just a startup, so, small dealership, nothing big, so.
And do you have a relationship to SNO Building Corporation?
I don't, nope, I just leased unit four from them back in January.
I take it they have no trouble with what you're doing?
Nope, he signed off on the conditional use permit when I turned that in, so.
Go ahead, I interrupted you.
He signed, he signed off on the conditional use permit when I turned it in, so.
Did he have anything else to say?
Um, nope.
Any other questions of the petitioner, Mr. Newell?
I, I do.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, did you say it was Stefan, is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah, Stefan, yep.
Okay, all right, Stefan, you're aware of all the conditions that were put on there, like you are limited to the five parking spaces in the front and the fenced area, are you aware of that?
Yeah, yes, does that, that, I'm, the way I look at that is, is I have the five spots up front, so five cars up front, and then whatever I can fit in my space in the back.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of the conditions that were put on there if you were approved, so.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? If not, you can resume your seats.
Thank you.
And open the floor to public comment. Does anybody have anything on behalf of or in favor of the petition? Seeing none, anybody who has anything to say in opposition to the petition? Again, seeing none, and close the floor to public comment and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the, including the facts and findings in the conditions.
Move a second, or excuse me, is there a second?
Second, Albers.
Move by Hogan, seconded by Albers, that we approve the application, subject to the findings of fact and conditions. Any discussions? Not call the roll? Joan, please.
Commissioner Scott?
Yay.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yeah.
Commissioner Albers?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Poppins?
Upstain.
Commissioner Pashby?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Newell, good luck to you. You're free to go if you're so inclined. Turn my car on, would you please? Item number five on the agenda, application for a conditional use permit to allow warehousing to exceed 20,000 square feet, this being USC 0112-2021. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman and Board, the applicant for this is Red Roof Rentals LLC. They own an approximately 1.26 acre parcel. This property, as you can see, is about 1,000 feet to the west of the city of T corporate limits, about 1,200 feet to the east of city of T corporate limits. Subject zoning the property is I-1 Light Industrial. Joining properties are like zoned except the property to the west, which is zoned commercial, but it's actually utilized for about the same purpose as the, as the subject property. Property is currently improved with a 14,400 square foot building, which was issued, which does not issue a conditional use permit, but was operated as a warehousing type structure. This is a picture of the subject property. So the applicant has submitted plans to build an additional building with approximately 8,640 square feet. That would bring the total to 20, over 23,000 square feet. The ordinance does require a conditional use permit be issued in the C Commercial District if, if building on the subject property is over 20,000 square feet, which this is. Staff did review the application with the ordinance and does feel that the conditions for approval are met as far as the, what the proposed use is and as far as what the zoning of that property is. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the application. Staff does recommend approval of the application with the findings and conditions as listed in the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Questions of Mr. Brown? Seeing none? Call forward Mr. Haas, is Mr. Haas here? Is there anybody here on behalf of Red Roof Rentals? Table?
I wasn't aware, I know that we were in contact with the applicant, I wasn't aware that he was or wasn't going to be here tonight. Yeah, I guess if you want to continue the public hearing and see if there's any objections to it, then you can decide as board if you'd like to table it or not.
I'll open the floor to public comment since the petitioner is apparently not here this evening. Is there anybody that would like to say something on behalf of the petitioner? Seeing none, does anybody like to say anything on, in opposition to the petition? Not close the floor to public comment, I'll entertain a motion. I think we can either go forward with it or alternatively table it till next one.
I will let you know, next month is a very lengthy agenda.
I know that, but I, this is me personally, I've always been reluctant to approve an application or petition of any kind if the petitioner is not here. But be your guy, whatever it is.
No, I agree with you, Chairman, I think. I'm gonna make a motion to table.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Albers.
Move by Scott, seconded by Albers, that we table this particular petition. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yay.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yeah.
Commissioner Albers?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Poppins?
Upstain.
Commissioner Pashby?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Item number six, a permit review, this is 14CUP022, a conditional use permit for a class one major home occupation. Mr. Brown?
This item is tabled by the Planning Commission in November. Again, this item was tabled by the Planning Commission in November of last year. Since that time, staff has discussed with the applicant, the applicant did update some of the submittal materials. Again, this property is located just to about, approximately a mile to the west of the city of T, just north of Highway 106. Subject property is zoned A1 agricultural, as is all surrounding parcels to the property. This is a area of the subject property, the subject property is primarily used as a single-family residential property. It has been improved with a house and also an accessory building to the property. I believe if I'm correct that that accessory building's approximately 5,000 square feet. As part of the staff analysis, I'll just go through this briefly, is that. As part of the staff analysis, I'll just go through this briefly, is that this property started out in approximately 2014 on a compliance issue. There was a complaint received on the property that there was a contractor's business being run on the property. Staff, previous staff then worked with the, with the landowner to submit an application for a Class One major home occupation. That Class One major home occupation was approved by the Planning Commission. As part of the Class One major home occupation, as you're aware, there are standards within the ordinance that can't be varied or can't be changed as far as what the conditions of what are standards for operating those are. The property owner, that property owner that received the conditional use permit then sold the property to the current landowner, the Spielmans. The Spielmans are currently operating what, what we has permitted as a home occupation on the property. And so staff did receive a complaint on the property, staff did investigate the complaint. Again, the staff analysis did identify that there was approximately three violations of the existing conditional use permit, primarily being outdoor storage, and then also number of employees on the property, and both of those things are limited with the standards of the, of the zoning ordinance. And so, again, we have been in communication with, with the landowner. The landowner did submit an updated site plan of the property. And as part of the site plan, they've also constructed a fence on the south part of the property as a, as a means to, to kind of isolate some of the outside storage of materials on the property. They've also, at the previous public hearing in November, there was some issues arisen by some of the surrounding property owners about the vehicles associated with the home occupation that were going north on the property and, or creating some issues with some of those property owners. So the applicant or landowner did agree that all ingress and egress of those vehicles would go to the south of the property that would be a shorter distance essentially to get to County Highway 106. Staff did, again, go on the property, close to the property on, on February 5th and did take some pictures. And this is looking directly to the west of the property at the driveway entrance there. So there's some vehicles and things, and then this would be a picture of the, of the fence that was constructed. This would be on the, on the east side of the property, going towards the south. This is our county staff vehicle, so that's why that car is parked there. And so as part of the staff analysis, we've, staffs identified that this is brought to you before as a review. The board does have the ability to act on this review this evening, after of course, public comment. But the options that you have per the ordinance would be that you can either, if you've found that there's substantial evidence that they're not in conformance, you can revoke the conditional use permit, or postpone action, or amend the existing conditional use permit. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
So with the existing home occupancy, is there, is, does that leave room for any outside storage?
So on the screen is, this is an excerpt of, of the standards for a Class One major home occupation. And number seven specifically says no outside storage, display of goods or merchandise, or external evidence of the occupation shall occur except as outlined in this section. And so, again, the, the landowner has submitted an updated site plan, which shows that there's some screening. It's up to the board tonight to decide if that screening is acceptable for coverage of the, of the storage on the property.
What about the size of buildings, Toby, for, is, is there anything in there for that?
Yeah, so it would be number four of the standards of the ordinance, is that in addition dwelling up to 2,000 square feet of accessory building space may be used for the occupation. And so you're gonna say, well, we did permit a 5,000 square foot building, but that's acceptable as long as only 2,000 square feet of it's being utilized for the occupation.
Is that the case, Toby, at least at the moment? Only two of the five is being used?
Well, I, we haven't been on to the property, so I can't, I can't tell you that's being used or not being used for it at this time.
Mr. Spielman probably tell us.
Correct, yep.
The other item in addition to the driveway was the number of employees, tell us about that.
So standard number three of the ordinance says employees of the occupation shall be limited to residents of the dwelling and up to two non-resident employees, not to exceed four employees on the site. Through the testimony in November, and then also through just some staff, staff viewing off the site, we've identified that there's a number of vehicles on that property. And so we've talked to the landowner about options for that to be in compliance, such as ride shares or, you know, taking home trucks and things like that. I've been assured by the, by the app, or by the landowner and their representative, that they're trying to work, that they will be in compliance with that condition.
By a number of vehicles, how many over four is that?
I think, if I'm correct, I think we identified 14 at one time, vehicles.
Any other questions of Mr. Brown? Seeing none, ask the petitioner to come forward, Mr. Spielman.
Josh Spielman, 27, 169 Ford and 67th Avenue, T, South Dakota.
Please pull up your mask.
Thank you. Yep. So after the last meeting, we hired an engineer to do a site plan to turn in to you guys. The fence is complete, except for the gate, which would be on the southeast portion. We have a contract signed with American Fence to put an electronic gate across there. The north-south berm is complete along the east fence. The east-west berm would be along the south fence. We would need time to unfreeze, we put a substantial amount of rock and gravel down, it's all frozen, so really don't want to waste that. My belief with the six-foot-high cedar fence with the berms, we plant trees on it, I don't think people will be able to see in at all the traffic, we have directed everybody to the south to make all the neighbors happy, and it minimizes traffic, and there's nobody on that little section. I'm working with my insurance company at the moment, we're hoping to have the end of March, having a deal with them, I can have my employees sign to let them drive company trucks home and allow my dump truck drivers to drive their dump trucks home and park them in front of their house. So right now, with it being cold and stuff, it's pretty tough with everything being a diesel. But I feel we've definitely moved forward with everything on their list except for the employee deal, but we do have a plan for that.
Is that gonna be an issue, dump trucks in front of houses?
Previous company I worked for, they parked them in front of their house, the drivers drove them home at night, and nothing from the city of Sioux Falls that I've ever heard of at least.
There you go. What's identified, or you've identified as a cedar fence, is the opaque fence referred to on the drawing?
Yeah, I think he's calling it as a wood fence that way.
But it is a cedar fence?
Yep, yep, a picket fence.
On, on the east and west and, and north sides, is that all in place?
Yep.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Anything?
So, yeah, so the fence is six foot tall, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then what kind of equipment's behind the fence?
Oh, there's dump trucks, semi, a lowboy, skid loaders, trailers.
Excavators, payloaders?
Uh, mini excavator, I pulled the big ones out just so, put them on developments.
Okay, so they aren't ever on the property?
It was an eyesore, and it stuck up my eye, so we pulled them out for everybody.
Okay, so they aren't ever on the property, or?
The mini stuff is and all that right now, but the big ones are not.
That's my only, you know, I was just thinking about that, I mean, a six-foot-high fence doesn't cover a lot of big equipment.
Oh, it does not cover the excavator at all.
You mentioned about the traffic, and, and currently there, there, and I've been by this site numerous times, and currently there aren't any houses to the south, and so today that seems like an okay plan to go there, but what happens if they start building houses to the south of you, what's your plan?
Long, long-term goal, I'm hoping within two years I can put up a shop right off the T exit. I just, with just buying this place and the cost of it, it's not in my wheelhouse at the moment.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Any other questions? What really good does it do you to have a five-foot berm and a six-foot fence?
You plant evergreen trees on it, we're looking at probably.
Oh, you're gonna plant trees on top of it, all right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're a step ahead of me. You can take your seat, thank you. Okay, well, open the floor to public comment, anybody here have anything to say in favor of the application?
Colin Fink, home address is 3520 East Prairie Wind Street, Sioux Falls. I represent Josh Spielman and Spielman Excavating, attorney in Sioux Falls. And I've been, I've been working with Josh through, through this process since it came up, and, you know, Spielman's purchased this, this property with the intent, like he kind of just indicated to you, Mr. Pashby, that this is not a, a long-term goal for him, and frankly, it's, it's a means to get by to the point where he, where he can do that, that other plan, where he's got his shop, that's an actual facility shop, that's probably put somewhere long ways away from here where it's, it's meant to be. And I think, if the commissioners remember, I mean, it was three months ago now that he appeared before you guys before, his main concern about this, this whole thing has been making sure that his neighbors are, are not upset with what's going on, and he, and he wants to do anything and everything he possibly can to make sure that he's a good neighbor and, and doing the right thing, so. As you can see with the fencing, the work with the berms, and his plans for the trees and, and whatnot for the property, he's certainly taken into consideration the, the look of the property and trying to improve that on a daily basis, even through what is kind of the prime of, you know, through the summer months when he had just first purchased this property. Trying to do all that while being in the prime of his, his workload as well, being an excavating company. So, I, I mean, it is, it is a, a situation where he doesn't plan on it being operated this way for a foreseeable future, it's a, it's a short-term fix to a, to what will hopefully be a long-term plan at some other location. But, I mean, this is kind of the, the means of his livelihood, and he's open to any, you know, he's done what, what was discussed last time as some ideas regarding the traffic and the fence and the berms. And he's certainly open to whatever the, the commission might have for any other conditions or, or situations that he needs to do, I think the big thing that was difficult to come up with was a plan for the employees, obviously. But he's, he's worked with all his employees about ride sharing those that don't take trucks home. Taking trucks home, which I know is a big, insurance-wise, just a big hurdle to get over. Trying to get people where they can take those, that equipment home after hours, and obviously, any of you can foresee the issues that an insurance company would have with some of that, so he's done a lot of work with that regarding, frankly, that's gonna cost him a lot more money too, probably to, to accomplish that, but he is open to a lot of things, he's, you know, jumping through whatever hurdles he needs to, to make sure that this can be something that he can, can use and facilitate for the next couple of years while he gets, gets kind of situated where he can move it to a different location and, and actually have it. Yeah, I mean, he doesn't want this to be the way it is forever either, but he knows that if he can't, doesn't have the ability to do it now, it'll probably ruin him for the, you know, for the foreseeable future until he can get his feet back under him, and certainly doesn't want to have that happen, so. Any questions for me? Nothing for me, no, thank you.
Any questions?
I just have one, I could have asked either one, but as you guys, you, you bring it up. Okay, a couple of things, that, that, that this is just a short-term fix to the longer-term goal. But yet we're planting evergreen trees on five-foot-high berms, thinking that that's gonna shield things, well, in two to three years, the evergreen trees aren't gonna do that, so I question that. I secondly question, where was the business at before it was here?
And Josh will be able to give you a more accurate answer, but he rented some space. That was not a foreseeable, I mean, that's part of the reason that this property was purchased. He, he lived, family lived down near Hurley, and so just geographically where the location where he's renting didn't work for the company, this property came up, and frankly, as Mr. Brown indicated, there, it sounds like there had been some complaints about the prior owner and the use of the conditional use permit back then. And it was purchased as kind of a, what I, what I would call a little bit of a good old boy agreement between the, the previous owner and Spielman's. Understanding that he had operated, the previous owner had operated a construction company out of the location as well, and kind of that this would fit right in with the conditional use permit that he had, and now obviously we know that, that's not quite the stance in the case, but he's certainly willing to do what he needs to do to appease, appease the board and neighbors and, and the county for sure.
So, I know who the previous owner was, I guess, and I know what his business was, and it seems like it was a lot different than what we're doing now. So, so I understand that. I guess the thing I keep going back to is, it looks to me like there's four, maybe five of the 11 conditions that are, that are being violated here, that we're out of compliance on. What, what are your thoughts on that, Colin?
Yeah, I think, I think from the last meeting, I would say that the ones that were pointed out, I, I think the board, when, and I, forgive me, I'm gonna probably use the right, wrong language, but when the like notice of non-compliance or whatever that was came up, I think there were those, at three or four points that were the, the exterior visibility of, of the business, the occupation, the, I, I think maybe the, the nature of the occupation, and then generally the big problem is employees.
Okay, so, so number one is the occupation shall be conducted entirely within the dwelling, okay, that isn't happening. Employees of the occupation shall be limited to residents of the dwelling and up to two non-resident employees, not to exceed four employees on the sites, that would be number two. Number four is in addition to the dwelling, up to 2,000 square feet of accessory building space may be used for the occupation, and I think we're at five, is that right?
The building size is 5,000 square feet, but I think, I mean.
But if we're only using 2,000, okay.
Yes.
But what it does is it backs us into a corner where we can't build any more buildings to put stuff inside either. You know, you, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
And then I would say, and then number seven, no outside storage, display of goods, merchandise, external evidence and occupy, you know, that, so, so those are the four for sure. And the one I would say, I mean, you know, we don't know, the occupation should not generate more than 10 visits per day from clients or customers, and that's one we don't know. Probably isn't happening, but, but that's one I would say suspect, so. So of those four, I guess, what you're asking us is, is to go against all of those, to continue this, this home occupancy. And my fear is, is, is what do we do then with everybody else that wants to, you know, that we've, we've said, no, you can't do that for? And I understand Mr. Spielman's situation, but you also have to appreciate what you're asking us to do.
Absolutely, I, I certainly understand the, the idea of the precedent that this commission would set in doing that, and, and frankly, I, I respectfully would say, we're not asking you to just kind of look the other way. I think we'd ask that, the, the, because obviously you can't do that. We'd be, we'd be asking to interpret, you know, interpret the language liberally and say that, you know, that the no outside storage, display of goods, that language, it's our understanding that in the past, the commission has, and, and I certainly can't say that it's this specific commission that's done that, but has, has considered fencing and, and some sort of shielding or whatever the language is to cover up those things, has been sufficient in the past. or whatever the language is to cover up those things has been sufficient in the past.
Do, do you have some examples of that?
No, I, I can't. I mean, I, I've just had, in having conversations with staff, um, indicated that while, while it doesn't say that, hey, you can have some fencing and, and that'll cover things up, it'll be fine. It's my understanding that in the past, that, that is something that's occurred and, and been acceptable in certain circumstances. I can't tell you that it's circumstances like this. Or if it's a matter of, hey, we need a fence to cover up a bike or something like, minimal like that. I can't tell you that.
Which you can understand. Would be two completely different deals.
Absolutely. And that's why I can't, I can't give you a specific example that would, that would say, hey, here's, here's an analogous situation at all. So I, I certainly concede that. But I would say that there are, you know, in terms of what a conditional use permit is, is meant to do, the policy behind having them is to make sure that these neighborhoods are not complete disasters full of ugly equipment sitting around and rotten. And although a property can be in compliance with, with certain codes and certain permits and things of that nature, we all can point to certain properties around the county that have issues and that this board has seen a number of times. I'm sure that, that are, while in compliance, are not what we wanna see on our county properties. And Mr. Spielman and his wife and the company have gotten this property to a point and are willing to do even more to make it a very, a very nice and attractive property that people will have zero problem being around and would hopefully create value in the area as opposed to deplete value. And I know he's willing to do that. And so to look aside from just the, the black and white language of the conditional use permit, I'd ask that the board, you know, look at the language, interpret it liberally. I understand that that's not, you know, you, you guys get to interpret that language to some extent, certainly. And if you think this satisfies what I would deem to be the policy behind this conditional use permit, I think you'd be well in your power to approve these, these conditions, the, the certain extra conditions that have been added on to help try and eliminate these issues. And, and still be well within your rights and powers to say, hey, we're not gonna grant conditional use permits without, you know, that otherwise violate our policy.
Anything else?
That's all I get, if there's no other questions.
Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did anybody need to give Mr. Spielman back for a question? Okay, open floor to public comment. I guess I've already opened it. Anybody else who has anything in favor of the application? Seeing none, anybody who objects? You've been kinda antsy back there. Now you can step forward.
Just to get my opinion, 'cause I was here last time too. So, 'cause I was the one that was concerned about all the traffic, so.
Give us your name, your address.
Brian Corner, two, seven, one, two, two, four hundred and sixty-seventh Avenue, T.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Brian Corner.
Can you speak in the microphone a little bit?
Brian Corner.
Okay.
Two, seven, one, two, two, four hundred and sixty-seventh Avenue, T, South Dakota. So I'm just up the road. Uh, my concern last time was just the traffic and stuff like that. And so, I mean, it's up to you guys what you wanna do with the fencing and stuff like that. As far as from north-south traffic, the fencing does nothing. I mean, you can still see everything from the southeast-west traffic on the highway. Yes, the fencing does a good deal and so, 'cause I'm not against him. So my big beef last time was the traffic. Because between the employees and the trucks and everything, 'cause every single piece of vehicle and everything that was going out there came to the north. And so what I used to know out there, it was completely changed. And so since then though, he has completely rerouted traffic to the south and it's made a major difference. And so I'm totally on board with all that. And so it's up to you guys on your decision on as far as how the property looks. That's not my concern. It's just like, you can judge that yourself. My biggest thing is the traffic that was going to the north. And so, and he has since changed that, and so I'm all for that. And so that, that's been, that's been really good. And so I think like that, fencing, things like that, short-term and stuff like that, I mean, that's your guys' decision. I mean, yes, to the south, the blocks at north-south, it doesn't. But that doesn't bother me that there's a ton of construction equipment in there. I mean, that's, that's just the way it is and that doesn't bother me one bit, 'cause I don't live in the city, I'm used to that. So it doesn't bother me. My biggest thing, what I would like to see written into this permit though, is that all commercial traffic or business traffic goes in and out from the south. I mean, and so that's, that's what I'm, my big push is for, so that if it is approved, that it is written into it, that all business traffic comes and goes from the south. And so, and hits that main highway in T. So that's what I'm looking for. He's definitely done improvements, I mean, and, and the traffic is the biggest thing. I mean, that, and that's what, the last time we met in November, I think you guys had six letters from our neighbors that were complaining about the traffic. And so that has since been resolved though. I've talked to most of them before this meeting. They're all happy with it, 'cause all the traffic is coming, going from the south. And so that's our, that's our big concern with it, so, yeah. And if someday he builds a shop, great, that's awesome. But I mean, or if he keeps it there, that doesn't bother all of us. The biggest thing was just all the truck traffic, the employee traffic, you know, there's 15, 20 cars going in and out of there a day, in in the morning, out at night, you know, plus the truck traffic. You're talking 100 cars a day almost between cars and trucks and stuff like that, you know? And so that was our big concern. But he has since rerouted that and that's, that's been a plus, so, and.
We assume that some of that traffic is gonna be ameliorated by just the number of employees who are gonna be traveling together, whatever.
Yep, well, that, that's your, that's not my concern is like, uh, my concern is if it's, if it comes in and out from the south, I don't think ride-sharing and all that stuff's the answer. But if the traffic comes in and out of the south, it hits that main highway, which is, he's really close to, then you hit that main highway and then it avoids our neighborhood and everybody up to the north and to the, to the east, so.
So, yeah, currently, there isn't any houses to the south. What, uh?
No, and I don't think you'd get any houses built to the south, 'cause he's only a half-mile maybe from the highway. I don't even know if you'd even get houses between him and the highway. I don't think you would.
What, how come?
Just because of the way that's the zone. I don't think you'd get it, I mean, what are you, a half-mile, quarter-mile? What are you? Just how close he is to the highway, maybe, he might be maybe a quarter-mile between him and there. I mean, maybe if there was a development that went in, probably, quarter, half, yeah.
Quarter.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it couldn't be.
You could build houses to the south as well.
Yeah, that could be. And, oh yeah, and to that neighborhood, there's a huge neighborhood to the south that isn't doing this, but yeah, so. I just, and I'm not the expert, I'm just saying, I don't think there'd be that many houses between him and the highway, so.
But I mean, you, you know, it's great that they're not going by your place, but if they end up, go, i- i- if we write that into it and they end up, and somebody puts a house down there and they gotta drive by, well, then they're in your shoes, y- y- same deal.
Yep, I'm looking out for my best interest, exactly, so, yep.
So then the, the neighbors that all wrote letters complaining about this, you have talked to them and they're okay with the way things are looking right now?
It's been much better since November. Yep, that's, none of them are here and none of them wrote additional letters, so, yep. 'Cause he has definitely rectified the traffic, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
And that's all I'm here to represent is just the traffic from my house, and so that's all I'm looking for, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any others who have anything to say about a way of opposition to the petition?
I'd make another, just a note to clarify something there, if I could, Mr. Spielman.
Go ahead.
Colin Fink, again, for the record. I think if Toby could scan down, on the site plan, um, there is the language there on the site plan that was asked by staff to be added specifically. I guess what, what we'd be asking is that the, this commission adopt this site plan as an ex, I don't know how, the, what the correct language would be or the quick verbiage would be, but a, essentially an exhibit or an, an attachment to the conditions to, so that that language, the all ingress and egress of company vehicles, including employee traffic, would be to and from the south of the property. So.
Other than company vehicles and employee vehicles, there are no others, are there?
Correct, I mean, I, I would, yeah, I mean, I suppose if a, if a friend comes to visit the Spielmans, that they can come from the, from the north if they want, I suppose, and, you know, but for the occupation purposes, anything that's coming in or out of that property would then, as a condition, be directed to the south of the property. And I, I know that was Mr. Corner, one of his main concerns is that something be written in. So we, we'd certainly, we did that. And that was, um, at the request of the staff, thought that that would be a good idea to include that. And we'd ask that this site plan be implemented somehow as an attachment or an exhibit to the condition so that it's clear that, you know, Spielman's can't tear that fence down and, and be in compliance with what this commission sees as, as a part of this conditional use permit. We certainly expect that all those things should be implemented and should stay implemented and stay kept up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else by way of opposition? Not to close the floor to public comment, entertain, a motion? And I think if somebody was gonna be so inclined to approve this, it would be subject to the conditional use permit being amended to include all ingress and egress to the property shall be from the south.
I would just recommend that you would add a condition to include the site plan dated one, eleven, twenty-one. If you so choose to amend the permit.
All right.
Hey, Toby, has you, have you had any other complaints on this property in the last couple, three months? I mean, since he's kind of started this process of, of putting the fences up and since he's had it done, have you had any complaints?
We've had discussions with the neighbors, but no complaints, no.
Okay.
Toby, um, i- is there a, th- they talk about they wanna do this for a couple of years before they build a different facility. Is there a timetable you can put on this? We can add to the, as a condition?
Yeah, I mean, you could add a condition that we would re-review it. I guess I had asked Mr. Spielman how long he thinks, I mean, three years, five years, whatever it might be. But you could add that as an additional condition that we would re-review this in 2025.
Again, further. Yeah, I, I guess Mr. Spielman can answer it too, and I know we've talked a lot about it, so I'll, I'll take the floor since, since I'm the one he's, he's asked to be here. Obviously, if that's a condition that needs to be put on it and makes the commission feel more comfortable approving an amendment, certainly reasonable, and, and I know Mr. Spielman would be all for that, if that's what it takes. Obviously, the more time that, that the commission would feel comfortable giving him, the better. It, it's certainly one of those things where if it, if he's out in two years and this board were to put a condition for a review by 2025, then certainly not gonna be an issue, obviously, at that point. If the board wants to review it in 2025 and it hasn't been used in that way in three years, then so be it. But, you know, we'd hate to be put up against the wall and, and have a, have a situation where they're forced out because of a review in two years. But, um, again, like I said earlier, he's certainly willing to do and willing to accept whatever the, this commission will give him for, for the means of operating this for the time being that he can, he can run his business.
Honorable Bob, March one of 2025, I assume that's not a problem?
He'd take whatever you'll give him, obviously. I think, yeah, if 2025 sounded like a good time period, he'd go with that.
That'd be, that'd be four years, and you both mentioned something about a couple of years.
Yeah.
In my mind, a couple of years is two years, so.
Should be enough time. Any other? I'll take a seat if there's no questions, sorry.
Hey, hey. I guess as far as the board up here, I mean, if the neighbors don't object too much, but there's a lot of vehicles sitting there. Has been all summer, but.
And if I can just interject here, this is Hogan. I just think, I know one concern was of if houses get built to the south. I mean, I would assume somebody who's gonna build a house out there is gonna go and, and, you know, do their own reconnaissance on the area and check it out. I mean, they're gonna see that there's obviously a business run out of there. So they're gonna see, you know, the equipment, they're gonna see, they're gonna see what's going on there. So they're gonna know that there's going to be traffic. So I, I don't, I, I myself personally don't want to deny this just solely for that reason. Because I, I mean, if I'm gonna build a house somewhere, I'm, I'm gonna go and check out that area first. Um, I'm not just gonna say, oh, that's a good place and go build a house. I'm gonna see what the area's like first, you know?
Okay, anybody else? Is there a motion?
I would like to, this is Hogan. I wanna make a motion to approve it, um, but include the site plan that was dated one, twenty-nine, twenty-one, and then also include a review, um, of the permit in March of 2025.
Is there a second?
She have the, um, traffic all going to the south?
Yeah, that's on the site plan.
Okay, that's the site plan right there, okay. I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved by Hogan, seconded by? Pardon me?
With that site plan deal on the vehicles all going to the south and that stuff.
Yes.
And I just, I just think four years is a long time. I could, I could, I don't wanna push them.
Let's compromise, say, say three.
But I, I really, I guess I'd like to see if we start having complaints or if, if there's some issues there, the guy could do something in the meantime, I mean.
Well, I don't think this forecloses us from anything.
Well, it real.
Depending upon what he does with his property and the extent to which he becomes a nuisance.
Because he's still, I feel, gonna be out of compliance with a lot of vehicles and that stuff out there. If there, if there's a lot of complaints of some kind, and you say there isn't, if you've talked to your neighbors and they're all happy and that stuff, I don't, I really don't have no complaints on it.
Well, what you could say then is, uh, uh, you're leaving it March one of 2025. Wendy, I guess this was your motion, or put it at March one of 2023. Unless the issue comes before the board or commission at an earlier time.
Well, it could stay at 2025, because all of a sudden, if Toby starts getting 10 phone calls a day, you guys are gonna come and reopen this.
That's exactly right.
So we could just leave it at, at that 2025.
Okay.
I mean, especially, especially with the, I mean, with the way the world is now. I mean, you don't, I would hate to put it at two years and, and I just don't trust the economy right now and to have to push somebody into this for two years right now. I just, I don't think that that's, that's something I, I'm comfortable with.
Okay.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the application. Subject to the site plan being attached and we take a look at this, uh, honor about March one, 2025. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Commissioner Scott?
Nay.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yay.
Commissioner Albers?
Yay.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yay.
Commissioner Poppins?
Abstain.
Commissioner Pashby?
Yay.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item number seven. Amendment to the 2009 revised zoning ordinances. Mr. Brown?
By the Board of Commissioners. And so the Board of Commissioners has worked on it in a draft and they've requested that that draft be sent to the Planning Commission for review and a recommendation. So tonight is the time and place for a public hearing to consider an ordinance that's been sent down by the Board of Commissioners for your review and recommendation. Um, in addition to this public hearing, uh, the Board of Commissioners did recommend that staff send out, uh, letters to all the, uh, permitted conditional use permits that are operating, uh, constant animal feeding operations in the county, um, as well as staff did send out, uh, direct mailings to, uh, organizations and groups that are for and against, uh, constant street animal feeding operations in the state. Um, so all of those people have been directly invited, as well as this has gone through a public hearing, a notice requirement. And so I'll briefly kind of walk through the changes. And again, this is section twelve oh nine F, specifically, constant animal feeding operations setbacks, uh, within the, the zoning ordinance or zoning regulations. Uh, so the first part of this is really just a, a clarification. Uh, this is the only section of the ordinance which mentions, uh, separation distances. All other mentions of, of, uh, or what I'll call setbacks in the ordinance all refer to setbacks. And so just for consistency purposes, because when staff will say, well, there is a separation distance for CAFOs, uh, we, we get kind of a weird look from people, so the people understand what a setback is, though, so the, really, the first part of this is really just to, uh, to simplify the language or clarify the language. Um, the second part of this is, uh, currently, right now, the wording is, is that setbacks shall be measured from the outermost point of the feedlot to the structure used, as identified in the setback chart, and that's the chart below. And so, um, this is some language that we've looked at before, but this would change that to say the distances between the constant animal feeding operation, a structure, a physical feature, is measured from the nearest wall of any confinement building, the nearest edge of any manure storage structure, or the nearest fence line of any open confinement lot to the nearest wall of the structure, outermost point of the physical feature. And so really, it just builds upon what that existing, uh, language is for how the setback is measured. And again, the next part of this is just, uh, clarifying that it is an exception, uh, that, um, that you can be, uh, achieved through, um, the waiver, uh, process, but then, again, clarifying separation distance to setback. And then the actual setback chart, it looks like there's a lot of changes, but there's not. The only real change is to, um, class C for dwellings and churches, schools, and businesses, and that's to increase the class C, um, from thirteen twenty to nineteen eighty. Uh, the rest of the red in the chart is basically showing, um, if, if it missed feet in the chart, or if it missed mile in the chart, we just clarified what that was, there was just some missing numbers there. And then the next part of this ordinance is, is that, um, we amended, uh, the ordinance, um, I believe in two thousand and eighteen, to include, uh, language, um, with the South Dakota Order Footprint Tool, and this is a tool, uh, that's based out of South Dakota State University, um, that's an estimating tool, uh, that allows, uh, the applicant to plug in, into the chart, uh, what type of operation they have, um, and then it, the chart then identifies, um, what the odor annoyance, uh, let free area would be. Um, and so again, uh, this is just an estimating tool, um, and so, uh, the, the staff is just recommending, we've talked about this in the past, is just removing that provision from the ordinance because it is an estimating tool, and there's, is there good justification for that to be a standard or a law, uh, in the ordinance? Then the next part of this is really a complaint process, and so, um, we do periodically receive a complaint, um, from, uh, neighbors adjoining property owners of constant animal feeding operations. Uh, staff does investigate those complaints, as we do investigate all complaints. However, as you are aware, um, the staff is investigating it for the ordinances that are in place. Um, and so there isn't a nuisance ordinance for odor, um, and so it's not a nuisance violation. And then the second part of it is, as part of the conditional use permit process, we don't specify, um, that there has to be a certain odor threshold or order, um, uh, essentially annoyance free level. Um, and so typically then, when we respond, that, you know, there's no violation of the ordinance or a violation of the conditional use permit, um, the, the complaint, it then addresses, well, what's, what's our next course of action? And so really, what we want to do with this section is just really just add some language in there so that we could get some mediation, and so we get the parties into the room and they can identify essentially what the issues complaints are, um, and see if there's any remedies that we can work through, much like the board did on that previous application tonight. Um, and so that was really the, um, kind of a real quick version of what those proposed changes are. And again, these are changes that are recommended, uh, or identified by the Board of County Commissioners that they've sent down for you for, uh, for comment. And so tonight, uh, you can conduct a public hearing, um, and you can recommend approval, you can recommend denial, or you can recommend amendment of this, uh, draft before you tonight. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff at this time.
Questions to Toby?
Toby, what's the, uh, what's the main reasoning for changing the, the setback, or increasing the setback distance on a class C?
Well, I think going back to the ad hoc committee, there was always discussion about there's the, the same setback for a class C and a class D, and of course, there's, there's numbers differences between a class C and a class D, and so there's always been discussion about making a difference between those two, and essentially, the six sixty increase came between, what's the difference between a class C and a class B? So that we're, so we're incremental, uh, with how, how we do the setback.
Any other questions, Toby? Toby, uh, you and I had a conversation today about this particular ordinance or the amendments, and, uh, I posed to you the question that I was always concerned about the odor footprint coming out of South Dakota State in terms of how in the world were they able to come up with that, whatever? But on the other hand, when you eliminate it, and I'm not suggesting retaining it, I think there ought to be a suitable alternative, but when you eliminate it, there's nothing. You talk about mediation, that's great, but there's got to be something that causes or compels the operator to come forward. If there's not something referencing some kind of an odor prescription, then he can just sit back cheek and say, tough, I'm not coming. There's got to be something, some teeth in something that needs to be imposed, or needs to be set forth as an ordinance, before, uh, I think you're going to get much cooperation of any kind. The other thing is, whether you, believe it or not, and I'm not saying that you don't, odor is a very legitimate issue with a heck of a lot of people, and you can conclude that, uh, oh, they're just whiners and whatever, uh, but it is a legitimate issue, it's a health issue with respect to a number of people. And there ought to be something stated in those ordinances that will cover that kind of situation. But those people particularly have a right to come forward and let their cause be known. And there should be the threat of that, I don't want to say threat, there should be that facing the petitioner, because it's going to cause him, operator, it's going to cause him or her to think a lot more about what he's doing on the property, or give him much better reason to come forward and participate in the mediation you referred to.
Well, I would, I would address that a couple ways, is that, and I, I think this is where the misunderstanding is with the public at times, too, is that the odor footprint is a citing tool, meaning that, that it has to be completed as part of the application process, and that that application process identifies if there is any dwelling within that, within that percentage of odor annoyance. And what I will tell you is that every application that we've had since this has been implemented, it's never changed the setback. Our, our, our general setback is greater than what the odor annoyance identifies. So, and we never point that out at the meetings, we really should to say, hey, this shows that our setback is greater than the odor annoyance is for that application or for that site. Um, the second part of that is, is that this isn't a monitored thing, it's a citing tool. So we don't, we don't go out and measure a year from now to see if they're meeting this odor annoyance, that's not what the ordinance requires, the ordinance requires that that's a citing tool. Um, and so there really isn't any threshold after it's been cited. And so I would say that, you know, when we implemented this, we hadn't, we'd been utilizing it, but we hadn't really utilized it from a regulatory standpoint at, at the application stage. And I think we didn't know at the time, but now we know is, is that our setback is greater than the odor annoyance level is. So really, the tool doesn't do anything, it doesn't increase the setback, um, as I think probably what we thought it would do. Again, what it shows is our, our general setback is greater than what the odor annoyance threshold is.
But I don't know how many times I've sat up here and heard the comment from either one side of me or the other, well, he has complied with the odor footprint. So to some people, it's been more than a tool to look at.
Well, we used to use them quite a few years ago. I think, we didn't, we just, we started bringing that footprint out, and as you said, the footprint, the odor footprint, the, our actual distance was further than the odor, odor footprint, you know? And as far as odor goes, every one of us in here is going to smell something a little different, wherever that is. It depends upon the humidity in the air, how cold it is, how warm it is, there's a, there's a lot of issues in there, which way the wind's blowing, how fast it's blowing, I mean, there's a lot of issues in there, so when it comes to, you, you almost got to go back to a distance as setback, because if all of us go out and stand fifteen hundred feet away from a building, or from wherever, we're all going to smell something a little different.
Well, a- and it was my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Toby, but the odor footprint was just used for the permitting process, correct?
For the citing process.
Yeah, for the citing process, so it wasn't something that held them into compliance.
No, no, it didn't.
So, so by removing it, uh, Chairman Pashby, we aren't, we aren't taking something away that's going to hold their feet to the fire on anything.
Well, it was something.
Then we're still in the same boat when it comes to odor.
It is something the state came out with here.
Right.
Ten, fifteen years ago, and we just wanted to see how, you know, how it sat up to.
Yeah, exactly. But it wasn't something that followed the CAFO.
Yeah.
Years later, that you could, you could come back and cite that said that they were out of compliance with odor.
I've got farmers to the left of me, farmers to the right of me, and they're all coming down.
Yeah, you're right in the middle.
Come on, let's hear it.
It just, you know, I mean, y- you know, and, and, and as Ra- as Ron was saying, I mean, I live right in between two CAFOs, uh, one's less than a quarter mile away, and one's, uh, about a half a mile away, and completely, you know, never have, uh, uh, issues with odor at all, so it, 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 uh.
But Eric, wouldn't you agree?
At the same time, at the same time, sight, distance, um, and, and the way the facilities are managed and handled, probably has more to do with the odor than the distance does.
Wouldn't you agree with me, though, that he's been around them since he was a kid? Uh, I, I don't, I don't know if you have, but.
Yep, pretty sure.
Don't, don't you agree that you get sensitized to it after a while?
No, I don't, I don't own a, I don't own a hog unit, but I've been around them plenty, and, um, and certain ones you walk in, they're, they're different than other ones, and a lot of it is management and the way they're built.
Well, this gentleman to my right, I know, has been sensitized, I think he could live, across the street from the biggest one in the county.
My wife couldn't.
So anyway, I think, I think, as far as the odor footprint goes, um, that discussion is, 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 is that that was, that was a tool that we were using in the citing or the permitting process, and it wasn't anything that was being held, um, as a compliance issue, is that right, Toby?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you can read it there, I mean, per the ordinance, and, and I really think, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll go on in this argument, but the, the, um, the big issue is, is that again, it's an estimation tool, um, and so for us to accurately say, this is what it's going to smell like completely, we know that's not true, there's no fact into it. And that's where it's a difficult thing to have as an ordinance or a standard or a law, is to have some as an estimation. I'll go a step further, is, is that we have, uh, an, we have a landowner in this room right now, that we had an application from him last year, that his particular operation didn't have a category within the odor footprint tool analysis. And so staff contacted SDSU and said, you know, how do we do this? And they said, well, uh, our former staff person's now at the University of Minnesota, why don't you reach out to them? Uh, so we reached out to someone at University of Minnesota, um, so we crossed the border to, to get some, give it some insight, but we, in a sense, manipulated it with their guidance. Uh, but it wasn't a clear-cut thing where we could just go into the tool and say, this is absolutely what it is. And so that concerns staff, you know, is that, um, that we, that as we go through an ordinance process or, or a law process, is we make sure that, that we're not interpreting anything here, we're just, we're, we're following the rule as what's established by the board. Um, there's concern there with that, is, is that, again, um, SDSU's had some staff turnover, they've had some limitations there, and then the second part of it is, you know, staff has also gone a step further, because we had public hearings and the public said, well, you need to include adjoining, adjoining, uh, landowners that have CAFOs into the analysis. And we started doing that, but when you read the ordinance, the letter of the law, it doesn't say that we're supposed to do that. So there's concern that, again, is that, you know, I'm not opposed, again, because from our staff analysis, this doesn't impact CAFOs in any way. Uh, it wouldn't have stopped any CAFOs that we had, it wouldn't have changed any operations that they had. Really, what we're saying here is, is that we, this, should this be a law? Should this be a rule or an ordinance, a law that we, that we as the county are enforcing? And the second part of that, again, is we continually talk about how this is a regulatory tool, it's not, it's a citing tool. And so we continually need to tell the public that, hey, we're not monitoring after this thing has been approved and cited, this is the requirement that to get it cited, and that's it, period.
I, I keep you all, or think you all keep addressing an issue, and, and like I am the, the lone wolf, so to speak, that's supporting that, I'm, I'm not advocating that at all, I just pointed it out, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Toby, just for clarification, I think you've said it multiple times, but, um, this tool has not once impacted whether a site was improved or approved or not approved, because our setbacks have fallen to a point where they're outside of what the SDSU, um, formulas would come up with, is that correct?
It hasn't increased the setback, no.
So, but the same token, it is a tool, whether or not it has an impact or not, could be part of our, could remain part of our requirement, for the sheer fact that it gives data for people to understand how, how odor does move, based on a formula and, and study that has been done by a, an SDSU or University of Minnesota grad student one year down the, down the road, but, so I don't know that it's pro- for or against removing it, um, but it doesn't impact it, so it wouldn't be a situation that would be a negative for leaving it in there either, so.
I, I think it should definitely be part of the application process, and there's a section, we could amend it as, as, as part of the application process.
I'm not advocating it be kept in, you can eliminate it as far as I'm concerned, if, I don't know about anybody else. But I, I still get back to the odor issue. Apart from the footprint, what's to keep an operator from willy-nilly doing what he or she sees fit? Doesn't clean their pits, uh, doesn't have any kind of a nip upkeep, doesn't get rid of the, the dead animals, uh, and it becomes a pathetic mess, in terms of how it impacts on the adjoining, or I should say, landowners in the vicinity. What's their remedy? They come before you and you say, I can't help you, I've got no tool, there's no ordinance.
Well, most.
Well, that's, that's not true completely, um, what, what you did did before this item, is if we receive a complaint and they're violation of the permit that you've approved, we bring it before you for review and potential revoke. So you do have conditions on every single condition.
In fact, it's a nuisance, right?
No, the, the. Well, there isn't, that I, that I'm aware of, there isn't a condition on any CAFO conditional use permit that they can't be a nuisance. The second part of that is subjective, your, the county's nuisance ordinance, the only CAFO requirement is, is that they have to dispose of dead animals within twenty-four hours. And the best of my knowledge, we've never received a formal complaint on any of that. Uh, encourage it, if, if someone knows that they haven't disposed of an animal, they can contact our office and submit a complaint. Uh, but that's the only nuisance portion that's relative to livestock confinement.
Okay. The majority of these, these facilities now, if they aren't managed right, they will, won't be livestocked in very long.
be livestocked in very long. The individual will either go broke, or the, a lot of them, if they're custom feeding, they got their own vets, they got their own people that come around and check on these facilities, and if they aren't run the way the individual wants them to run, the, they won't be feeding hogs for them anymore. That's how a lot of them are kinda done, that's, I guess I don't see that so much as a problem.
No.
Myself, knowing the industry, I do.
Okay. Is this a matter for a public hearing, it's under that?
Yes, yep, so, uh, for and against?
Okay, if there is nothing further in terms of questions of staff, uh, I'll open the floor to public comment. And I'm gonna take it either way. Anybody wanna step forward and give your testimony, as it were, insofar as what's been proposed here tonight by way of these amendments?
Don Hoffman, four seven three three one, two hundred and seventy-third Street, Harrisburg. Here we go again. A year and a half, two years ago, we were down here, we wanna change the ordinance on the livestock people. We gotta make it better, we're gonna make it better. People, if you ran a business that cost you a million, two million dollars to set up, would you be willing to stay in Lincoln County, and every year or two, come back down here and have them change the regulations on ya? I won't. Right now, we're feeding cattle up by Harrisburg. Two weeks ago, I got my assessment notice from the people right down the hallway. My house went up a hundred and some thousand dollars. You think, "Oh, what's that gotta do with this?"
I was thinking about that.
Huh?
Go ahead.
I've got eight hundred head of cattle standing within six hundred feet of that house. Now, if setbacks was a problem, I would be out of there. Why would my house go up a hundred thousand dollars? We got two, two government entities working here, planning and zoning, and the assessors. And neither one's talking to each other, because they're making an ass out of all of us. Why do we need a mile, half-mile setback on these places, when the assessor's office is telling me, "You can sell your house for that, Don, you'll get more money than that for ya." What are you comparing me to? They're comparing me to somebody north of Canton, over here on a five acre, and, but our square footage is the same, so my house must be worth that. Well, if they're saying it's worth it, and the cattle don't make any difference, why are we going through all of this? I've got a metal barn, the event center, they put up one building, they put up another one, within a half mile of my cattle yard. Several years ago, they were shooting fireworks up there. I had eight hundred head of cattle, I couldn't see the dawn lights, because they were running around the pens, and we thought for sure, this was two weeks before the Fourth of July, that they were gonna be out in the cornfield. I went up there and told them they needed to stop. "Oh, didn't anybody talk to ya before they did it?" "No." The next week, I went down here and filed a complaint against them. Got a lawyer, we went back and forth, what do we do? Well, we can file a, you know, a complaint against them, and if it does it again, you can come after them for monetary damages. Okay, we did that. Lawyers went back and forth. As of this day, I'm not allowed to go up there to the metal barn, because if I show up on there, they're gonna have me arrested. All I was doing is protecting my own property here. And I'm the one that's the criminal here, because I can't even go up to the metal barn, if there's somebody has a party up there. We have all these rules and regulations, that's fine. Mr. Pashby, we have dead cattle, they die. After twenty-four hours, you wanna get them off the place. Either that, or cover them, or bury them, or do something, I mean, you can't leave them lay around, I lived there. And I tell you what, when they start blowing up like a balloon, you don't want them to pop, you want them to go someplace else when that happens. So, I mean, I take that as an insult, when, when people say that, "Well, you're gonna let this happen, and you're not gonna take care of this." My God, this is our business. We do the best we can. I mean, we don't go out and plant a crop, and plant the corn, and then not, not care about it all summer long, just let it go, and let the weeds grow. Livestock isn't any different. I've been out there, eight, nine o'clock, the last few nights, putting bedding down, so these cattle can lay down on something dry and solid. Do you think I don't care about what happens, or about my neighbors? I've got one neighbor that's got a house fifty feet away from my cattle yard. You know, and to say that, "We're not taking care of this stuff, we don't care what's going on," I'm sorry. I walk in that stuff every day. Thank you.
Anybody else, anybody else like to step forward?
Randy Henderson, uh, eight ten Wedgewood, Beersford. What I have a problem with is on the distance, Toby, we've changed, we've argued this point many, many times, on the, uh, classification, if you could lower that down. When you go from a half mile, uh, the reason we changed it to, uh, five thousand, two hundred eighty feet, uh, years ago, was because any operation, whether you owned a eighty or a quarter, you couldn't fit any operation inside that half mile. You know? Because it, uh, because your property goes to the middle of the roadway, but, uh, you may, you can't measure that inside your own property, to set your, your building back. And, there's a big difference between a half mile, and, and what is that, uh, twenty-six hundred and forty feet? There, there's quite a, uh, and that happened in my particular case. So, that's the only argument I have on that. As far as the rest of it goes, that's pretty much standard procedure, uh, the footprint, all that, we go through that all the time. But that, that's the only change I can see that I would be against. Uh, just leave it the way it was, so an operator, if he buys a quarter of land, he can at least fit it inside his own perimeter of his own, own land. Otherwise, it won't fit.
Hi, I'm Craig Anderson, uh, four six four eight four, two hundred and eighty-eighth Street. Uh, couple of the things, with pork production especially, beef is, have BQA now, you want me that up again? I can't hardly hear you guys when you're talking into this. But pork quality assurance is one of the industry standards that we use, and that they do site assessments on our places, so that we have to keep them pretty well up to snuff. Cattle are headed that way, because I had to do my BQA, I think, a year ago, that was a requirement, if I remember. And so, they're headed the same type of way. One of the things also, that, uh, there aren't too many pork producers that are gonna let too much get out of hand because of biosecurity. The biosecurity is so important anymore, to keep healthy pigs, so that we don't have to use antibiotics, that's one of the things that's gonna really, uh, curtail any bad actors. And like, I believe Ron said, that any bad actors, they're generally gonna be gone and out of there, and somebody else is gonna be in running that confinement system, or whatever. The thing about the odor footprint, when we started using it, 'cause I was on the board, as some of you know, for quite a while, we started using it when it was based out of Minnesota, we'd used it a couple, and then, one of the people up at SDSU had started taking that job on. Well, they have moved, so that that's part of the problem, that we can't get them as good, to be able to come and get it done right away, so that if you're gonna be working within a, a two-month window, or whatever, that it's difficult to get it done in that amount of time. Also, we have thirteen steps yet, that has to be met for the sighting and everything. Dead removal, fly, uh, fly stuff, and there's a number of things that have to be met, as you know. And so, as long as people are gonna commit to that, and you're gonna commit to, like you say, eight hundred to a million dollars, it's kinda against our interest, if we aren't gonna keep things up to date and up to speed, in doing the best that we can. An odor is always a subjective thing, that is one of the hardest things to have to try regulate and think, "Well, this odor, some people, it is affecting more, maybe they're more sensitive about things." But, when you move out into a rural area, isn't that one of the things that we need to be thinking, that, well, these are gonna be things that are happening out in the rural area, there's gonna be dust, there's gonna be chemicals, there's gonna be odors that you aren't used to? So, that's just a few of the things that, the, uh, the clarifying of the text and everything, yeah, I agree with that, uh, we wanna take as much of the wiggle room as much of that out of there as possible, so as long as we can clear, clean that up a little bit, and make it so it's less subjective, the better off that we are. The better that we have the planning and zoning ordinances, the easier it is for you guys to make your decisions. Thank you.
Greg, one question. What are, what are your thoughts on the proposed setbacks?
The setbacks? I understand why Class C got moved, uh, as to say, there's gonna be that much more odor compared to a Class C and a Class D, like I say, that's subjective, but to say that, yeah, that's kinda halfway in between, I can understand that. Uh, is it gonna affect many producers? Right now, I can't think of someplace that it would, it's two hundred and twenty yards. So, you would hope that we would be able to find an area that we could come within that. And, when Randy Henderson said that about, uh, one of his sites, that was one of the things that, when we had done this, that we had changed it, so it wasn't exactly on a half mile, or a quarter mile, or something, to give that little bit of room for somebody that's on the same side of the, your property. So, that was exactly what we were thinking, that we could just have them within that, and just be that little bit. So, two hundred and twenty yards, maybe, maybe it would be affecting somebody someplace, but right now, I can't think of it. And, there aren't many producers that wanna encroach on their neighbors and cause problems. We wanna try to be good producers, I have cattle too. Most of the time, we're gonna do whatever we can. Of course, with the rains that we've had these past few years, the cattle was probably worse than the hogs, for being able to keep things under control and limit your runoff and everything. So, it's, it's gonna work against cattle and pigs. So-
Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Mr. Hoffman, what I was referring to is the non-resident, or alternatively, the non-on-site operator. I, uh, there's one that I drove by about, uh, a year, excuse me, two years ago. I went to the enclosure, it's not even an enclosure, maybe three-sided dead pig location. There were three dead pigs in there, that appeared to me to have been there for some time. I came back about three days later, they were still there. Now, if that was on your property, I suspect you wouldn't have done that, or permitted that to happen. But there are those non-residents, so to speak, that I think probably, in more cases than not, present the problems, if there are problems. Okay, anybody else have anything to say on this issue? Just, just as long as you don't take too long, why don't you come back here? I'll give you a couple of minutes.
Maybe I'll get in trouble for this or that, I don't know. But as an elected official, if I went on a place like that and saw that, I would be calling a special meeting right here, and shutting them down. There is no excuse for that, absolutely no excuse, because that makes every one of us, that are sitting here trying to keep our operation running smooth and clean, gives us a bad name. So, as an elected official, if you walk up, you're welcome to come on my place anytime. I ain't gonna guarantee you it's gonna smell good all the time, if you come after a rain, it might be something else, but-
Well, there-
My object is to keep that place clean eighty-five percent of the time.
There, you're assuming facts, not in evidence, I'm not elected official. I'm a lowly volunteer. And I've gone to the point of driving to the Canton, I wouldn't have got paid for the mileage, so, thank you.
No, but, to me-
I understand what you're saying. I kinda figured we'd hear from you.
I don't know what you're talking about, Gary. Mr. Chairman, committee, committee members, my name is Anthony James Ventura, I live at four seven seven six three, two hundred and ninety-second Street, Hudson, South Dakota. Um, I wanna respond to one of your questions from earlier, these setbacks go into other people's property. And so, when you're measuring to the house, you have the issue of, if you owned a pro- wanted to put a CAFO up, if you built it further into your property, your chance of impeding into your neighborhood would be much less. And I think that has to be addressed. And when I hear things like, road noise, dust, noise of north, why are the people different down south? And that really needs to be concerned. So, here, here's my speech, and I'll just, I'll burn through it, so be patient. Here we go again, twelve oh nine F changes-
Excuse me just a second. I'm gonna give you about, uh, five minutes at the most, so-
It's not that long.
All right, good.
Well, unless you ask me questions, then it will be. Here we go again, twelve oh nine F changes. "Is an insult to all landowners, as the way it is written. It gets Class C only six hundred and sixty feet more of setback, but the language from the distance from a CAFO to a structure, has been stripped further from all classes of CAFOs, and property owners will lose more than they gain. An operator can bring in equipment or animals that are, that are housed, or permitted outside the property, which changes the measurements and the setbacks. This needs to be from the property line of the CAFO. Language needs to be specific, and not, and not ambiguous. Um, if you go to the property line without waivers, you can only build four Class D CAFOs in Lincoln County." So, that talks about how intrusive this is. This is not banning ag, but shows how intrusive these facilities are to the people, property, and creates trespass zoning. There will still be plenty of animal, small animal operations with less CAFO size, moving into Lincoln County. I am sorry to all the CAFO operators, and all the residents of Lincoln County, because planning and zoning in Lincoln County Commissioners refuses to use language that is black and white, but instead uses ambiguous language that leaves too many open-ended questions about the real definitions of ordinance. This is shameful and embarrassing. So, in looking at the staff analysis on page thirty-seven, it states, "Minimizes conflicts with human activities." There's no definition of what a human activity is. So, this needs to be replaced with olive zoning, for all of Lincoln County, especially in, not only in the ag areas, but everywhere, so you're not creating discriminatory zoning, where a person lives or in the individual property rights. And the statement should say, "No new activity or operation of any new permit shall be established or maintained, which by reason or manner of operation will cause the emission of noise, odor, toxic or noxious fumes, smoke, dust, and particulate matter, in such concentrations to be detrimental, or to endanger the public health, welfare, comfort, and safety, to cause injury to property or business, or housing eligibility." This is true protection of property rights for all citizens. It brings into balance into zoning, so that intrusive zoning has to obtain waivers. Everyone knows the same rules apply on both sides. On page thirty-seven, it says, "Giving due regard to existing operations." Once again, you're being ambiguous. Some of these existing operations do not meet the new current setback requirements, or permits are missing by the county for years. Every time I go down to planning and zoning and ask for them, they can't find them. So, how do you have this, these people are special, and we're not? Um, a Class A operator that was on planning and zoning, new- A Class A operator that was on planning and zoning knew when these old changes passed that would require him to have obtained waivers from neighbors to change and modify his existing operation. This is called community progressive zoning, which is respecting the property of your neighbors next door, not being selfish for you and your rights. The new language of Lincoln County should not be so ambiguous that allows for trespass zoning or interferes with property rights. By creating densification, intensification of operation in fairness with properties, rights takes hold because planning and zoning has refused to use language that defines both sides of the property line and what expectations are. New language needs to be incorporated. The South Dakota odor footprint tool needs to be put back in place as a prediction tool as well for, as a nuisance tool. Previous twelve oh nine changes passed by planning and zoning were to the property line. It would eliminate all these conversations because they would lead to any, they would lead to any interpretations, but it would make them correct. So for this hearing, I asked you to vote down these changes because there's missing language. I would like to see the commission, see it sent back to the commissioners from your last amendment. Maintaining inappropriate crust, cover, or earth and basin. Managing odors through use of covers, curtains, or biofilters. Things to take care of annoyance from the neighbor. Utilizing South Dakota odor footprint tool for odor prediction for all other adjacent confinements. So when you add or stack, you have to add in. A confinement has to, has to buy a certain amount of acres. And it can be seen that they, if they have added animals outside the confinement, which changes the odor setback, that's why we need to change these rules. Because every permit I've seen, you say, you can build a building, but what you do on the outside, we don't regulate. And of course, then you guys pass laws and say, well, geez, we don't have anything to bring them back in on, so they can do what they want. And it's embarrassing. We live here. Physical features.
I'm sorry. You've exceeded your five minutes. I think you should wrap it up. Thank you very much. Any questions of him?
I do actually, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You want to step forward again? Thank you.
Hey, Tony. Question for you. As you were speaking, I was wondering if we had a, we talk about this odor footprint tool that we, has not been utilized because it has not impacted a, either approval or denial of any, um, operation. If we had a system that did create a better analysis for odor impact and then could be used to go against property lines, if it indeed actually decreased the amount of setback, is that something you would think would be a logical step?
I haven't seen a small CAFO, Class C or anything else, or D. They're built directly adjacent to the road. So I don't know how I could answer that question because from what I've seen of the latest buildings, there's, that answer would be pertinent. But if you could build something or you could force them back far enough where the tool would measure from the, from the property line, that would be discussion, yes.
I, because the impact from the SDSU or University of Minnesota is actually smaller than what our current setbacks are, are. So, but if we, and I'm not, I'm not going to say that the, the odor footprint is, it's not an exact science. But if they were able to develop something that was more precise as to where it would impact or not impact, could we then maybe possibly at that point be able to utilize that to determine off of property lines as you proposed so that somebody isn't negatively impacted?
I agree because just like somebody blanching off, you know, fireworks next to a cattle yard, that directly affects Don Hoffman. And I, you know, as a person next door, I want to be treated the same that Don gets treated. And so you have to start looking at property lines. But these measurements go to the house. And you have four housing eligibility's per quarter in almost all of South Lincoln County. And you can treat it, you've given them the properties by the commissioners, which you continue to just keep stepping on that rate. And that has to be addressed, especially by planning and zoning commissioners. Thank you.
Anybody else like to say something on the matter before us? I'm going to limit everybody to five minutes. I should have said that at the point of beginning and.
Yeah, I guess that would have been fair if the other ones would have been limited too.
Well, I don't know that anybody really went terribly beyond that. And I suspect you aren't going to do that, are you?
I don't intend to know.
Good, thank you.
Ernest Strutmeyer, twenty-eight, five oh three, four seventy-four Avenue Worthing. I'm asking the Planning and Zoning Board to vote down these changes to these CAFO ordinance because why is one percent of the intrusive CAFO operations being allowed to overrun ninety-nine percent of the rest of the county, which is crop-based and small to mid-sized livestock? When it comes to setbacks that do not protect ninety-nine percent of the landowners in the ag district? Permitting these operations to build infectious adjacent properties with their noxious gases, odors, pathogens, dust, noise, sometimes twenty-four seven for days on end, is an insult to all the people who live in Lincoln County and does not live up to Lincoln County's own mission statement of protecting the health and safety of its citizens. And I understand that, as this gentleman was saying, he takes care of things. I live where I'm at. One mile south of me and a half, two-thirds of a mile east, there's a CAFO that was put in and I had no idea it was coming until the building's going up. So I had no way to ask questions about it. Then it got up and, uh, then there's times like in the fall and, well, different times of the year, I've logged some things, brought in a complaint about it. And the response was, just as you've said, there is no teeth in the system. There was nothing they can do because they were within compliance. The odors, it's just as if you were right on the farm where the CAFO is. And I don't know what the reasons are. I don't know if there's better ways and better operators, but from where I'm at, there's times when there's five days in a row when you have that humid, moist air and a gentle breeze coming in my direction. And the only times I notice it are the days when I'm at home and the breeze is out of the direction where those CAFOs are. And I also have noticed it in different areas as I go down the road and depending on the direction of the wind. And I'm over a mile away by any way that you measure it. So as far as these setbacks, I don't know that setbacks are the answer either because there's, there's no way they contain their fragrances and the disease-ridden pathogens that are in the air that blows by. There's no way they contain them. So as far as whether it's a half a mile or whatever, it isn't enough. It doesn't protect the rest of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Strutmeyer? I guess there are none, thank you. Anybody else would like to be heard? Good evening.
Good evening. Lynn Hurley, four eight oh three two, two hundred and seventy-seventh Street, Canton. For full disclosure, we do have livestock facilities. We're hot, we raise hogs. Fourth generation. My son would be fifth generation in Lincoln County. I just want to go through some quick facts. I think setbacks are a useful tool in our county. This particular, uh, issue tonight though, I think is based more on, I think they're all based more on emotion than they are in fact or science. I'd like to see them be more science-based. I think they're based on emotion. In the last ten years, livestock setbacks have increased over sixty percent in Lincoln County. And they were eleven hundred and eighty-eight feet in twenty-twelve when we built ours. And that was for a Class C and a Class D. And right now, this recommendation is to go to one thousand nine hundred and eighty feet. So it's almost doubled in that length of time. So the same building ten years ago, now we almost have to move it twice as far. But the technology has improved. The science has improved. Nutrient management has improved. And I think there's, there's good dialogue and discussion for these setbacks. But I'd like to maybe look at our peer group up in Minnehaha County. And I think my numbers are pretty close. But I think that has about three times the population of Lincoln County. And the standards are a little different. So in Class A in Minnehaha County, it's three thousand nine hundred and sixty feet, which is exactly Lincoln County. Class B is one thousand nine hundred and eighty in Minnehaha. And I believe it's two thousand six hundred and forty here. And the C, they combined C and D. That's thirteen hundred and twenty feet. And we want to take ours from thirteen hundred and twenty to nineteen hundred and eighty. Significant uptick. And I think setbacks are a great tool. But if they're going to solve problems in Lincoln County, you know, we've got two notable examples of CAFOs that are causing a lot of trouble. And they're over, if my, if my measurements are correct, they're over one thousand nine hundred and eighty feet away. So I don't, I don't think it's a setback issue. Just a couple last things. I think we need more discussion. I don't think we need one rule for the whole county. A lot of urban growth to the north. Maybe we strike a radar and say, north of this is urban development. South of this, there's a little different standard or critique. We have, we have barns. There's no restriction for a neighbor selling two and a half acres and putting in a, a house to someone that wants to move down from Sioux Falls. So there's no setback away from my buildings. So now I have to deal with that, right? So I think there's opportunity for further exploration of some of these setbacks. That's all I had. Any questions?
Questions, Mr. Hurley?
I would like to thank the staff for sending out the invitations. I think that's a step in the right direction. Get the right people here and get some more dialogue going. As far as questions about operations, we have a checklist every month we have to complete. Does it generate work? Fly bait, rodent bait, all those things. So there is a checklist and that's available if anybody wants to see it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Looks like that's it, so I'll close the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I have two, we did receive. I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, we did receive two emails this morning. But I'd like to read, that they request that we read. The first one is from Cindy Thomas. I'll try to read this fast, I can get it in five minutes. But this is from Cindy Thomas. She was unable to be here tonight. I am severely disappointed in this new twelve oh nine F CAFO amendment changes. After all the work over the last few years, these changes have taken steps backwards. And to clarify, please know that CAFOs are large animal count units that can reach into thousands of animals. Several months ago, this board passed a new amendment, twelve oh nine F CAFO ordinance. It includes measurements of setbacks from property line to property line. It includes setbacks between facilities to prevent stacking and for biosecurity reasons to protect other CAFO herds as well as small animal operations, which in today's pandemic, we should be very concerned as viruses stemming from animals become zoonatic and pass to humans and then from humans to humans. The amendment also included additional conditions for the applicant's operation. And the odor footprint tool was left in place for prediction, hopefully nuisance resolutions. Today, what, today what you see before you is an amendment that is totally biased against landowners. It sets up again a setback that only protects a structure home. But the land around that home, whether it be several acres or many acres, is devoid of any protection from putrid odors, dust, noise, pathogens, and noxious gases that with our high humidity travel long distances along the ground. Farms, ranches, and acreages have been stripped of protection of the land they own, pay taxes on, and bought for smaller, large crop farming operations, small animal operations, gardens, tree farms, recreational uses, hunting and fishing, organic farming, and pure enjoyment of their land. Moving setbacks from structure to structure not only does not protect people's land right, but defeats the additional six hundred and sixty feet added to the setback of a Class C. The only way to truly mitigate the ills of this type of intrusive intensified operations is to distance them to establish setbacks from property lines to property lines. CAFO operators call this a ban on operations, but waivers in place as they should be. Having to go talk to your neighbor before impeding on their property with their operations is necessary and is, it is called civility. And it, and it goes both ways. I, as a property owner, should need to talk to them if I was going to establish a business or some kind of operation that would infringe on their property rights. I did not understand why this has become a one-way street and a very small percentage of operations in Lincoln County AG District is favored over land rights of the majority in Lincoln County AG District. The last amendment that this board passed, I believe you voted it through knowing and good conscience that all citizens' land rights need protection. This new amendment does not do that, and I ask that you do not give up now. Changes need to be made, and I ask you to vote this amendment down and have the planning and zoning go back and write an amendment that does not discriminate with zoning regulations. Again, that was from Cindy Thomas. The next one is from David Gillespie. I do not agree with the new changes to twelve oh nine F of the CAFO ordinance. They have again been stripped down to afford no protection adjacent landowners of a CAFO operation. Businesses, a hundred-year-old family farms, farmers and acreage owners are fed up with an industry that is far in the minority, taking away their rights to enjoy all their property by impeding on other properties with noise, horrific odor, dust, and pathogens. These shallow setbacks are brought only to the housing structure and the rest of the farm or acreage lies unprotected. And the many uses that property owners use their land for is thrown to the wind. Iowa, Iowa is full of CAFOs. No more room to build. They have destroyed properties, air quality, and water waste. They're now moving into South Dakota to expand operations. Our current infrastructure cannot support these large twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five heavy operations. We have failing bridges, roads that need paving, and new bases. What is the county putting, why is the county putting the cart before the horse? Should we not improve infrastructure before allowing these operations to further damage what we have? These operations should no longer be considered ag. They are commercial operations in an ag zone and need to follow commercial regulations of operation. No one should have to put up with large trucks clamoring at all hours of the day and night along with heavy road traffic and the noise of running animals. When that is the situation, distance is the only mitigating factor, not only to a house or a church, but for all land used by property owners. I also believe the odor footprint tool needs to stay in place. It may not be the best tool, but right now it is the only tool that helps with prediction of odor, and it is a must as it takes into account all odor, all odor sources on a property and prevents CAFO stacking, which just adds to all the ills for adjacent landowners. It is a tool for nuisance complaints. The Planning and Zoning Board has in the past passed changes to the CAFO ordinance to protect the land rights of the people in the ag district here in Lincoln County. Do not cave now. These proposed changes are poorly defined with worrying that leaves far too much open in the interpretation by the Planning and Zoning Department. This CAFO ordinance needs amending and it has to address intrusive overtaking of other landowners' land. Thank you for your consideration. David Gillespie, one one two five East Elder Street, Canton, South Dakota five seven zero one three. Former Lincoln County Commissioner for twelve years in District Number Two.
Anything else? With that, I'll close the floor to. Public comment?
Can I make a couple comments?
You're going to have one just a moment.
Okay.
And would entertain a motion. Get something on the floor. Sir, you know, pull your mask up, please.
So I, I'm going to make a few comments before I make my motion. Is that fair?
If you promise to make one afterwards.
If I promise to make a motion afterwards? I promise. Okay, so I, as a, you know, and I can appreciate everybody's comments. And I'm glad everybody showed up because this is a topic that I think the more people we get in the room, the more people that discuss it, I think we get to common ground. One thing I continue to hear and that, that, that bothers me, I guess, is, is that, you know, the CAFOs are infringing on everybody else's property, but there's nothing to protect the CAFOs. There's nothing, as, as I believe Mr. Hurley said, there's nothing in place that if, if Lynn's son wants to build another hog building currently and meets all the setbacks on a piece of property that they've owned for maybe five generations in their family, if somebody comes along and builds a house across the road, no, that just changes their plan.
And in my opinion, that's no different than we build a CAFO and it, and it affects your 40-acre housing eligibility. It's exactly the same thing and exactly the same issue. And, but currently, there is some things to protect the, the acreage person or the house. But there isn't going back about anybody that has a current CAFO or wants to expand a CAFO or wants to build one out of thin air in, in a few years. And I can tell you, my years in, in retail agriculture and production agriculture, that one of the, one of the absolute easiest ways to bring a kid back to a farm and keep them in a community and go into your church and go into your schools and doing things in your community is to start them in, in livestock. And I know there's, there's a certain one person sitting in this room that's a young operator in Lincoln County. We just approved an expansion for him not too long ago, and, and that's what's keeping him going on the farm and, and probably going to keep his family going on the farm. So I have some problems with, with continuing to, to say, to, to throw CAFOs and livestock producers in, in, in the gutter and saying that they or we are bad people. And continuing to put handcuffs on them and make it harder and harder to do business. Now with that, we, we, as a planning commission, we voted to get rid of the special use permitting policy here a few months ago. And with the special, with the special use, that, and, and the reason for that, the, if I remember, the two biggest reasons was is that we wanted to have all CAFO applications come through this room. And wanted them all to have public comment and have that opportunity. And then I believe the other biggest thing was is so that we could add conditions to their, to their application. And so as far as setbacks go, I, I think that we're just fine where we're at, at 1,320. And I guess if we have to be different, let's make the, let's go the other way and let's make a Class D 660 feet instead of 1,320. And then we can, then we can incrementally be different. And then if it comes to a point where we have a problem, we can handle it here during public comment, and if we need to add conditions to make something 1,980, I believe that's in our power to do so as, as a planning commission. And we can do it on a case-by-case basis versus having to handcuff the whole industry and the whole county. Because in most cases, as I can tell you, we hear a lot of negative stories about, about CAFO operators, but I live right in between two of them and I don't have a problem with it. I know Mr. Hurley has a couple of them up there or around him, both his and, and his, and I don't see any of his neighbors here. I know Craig Anderson has a bunch of hog buildings over there. I don't believe any of his neighbors are here in, in objection. I've, I've, I know exactly where Mr. Hoffman's place is, and he's got a lot of neighbors, and none of them are here in, in objection. And so there's a lot of those operations that are run very, very well in this county. And, and new ones that will continue to be run well, and I don't believe we need to handcuff those people versus instead of trying to continue to go after new, or limit new CAFOs and, and, and put more regulations. Why don't, why don't Mr. Ventura, why don't you and your crew come up with an, with an, with a, with a plan on how we can deal with the bad actors? Because I'm all about that and I appreciate that. And I think that, that, that as Mr. Pashby says, there probably isn't enough teeth into something that if somebody is out of compliance, what do we do with them? And so I'm gonna make a motion that we accept, but I, that we, that we accept this as it's presented with the amendment, that we take the, the recommended increased setback on Class C back to 1,320. And if we need to, if they need to be different, then, then we, we make the recommended setback on a Class D 660 feet.
Okay, you've all heard the motion. That is to accept it as is with the exception of Class C, that it go back to 1,320 feet, that is, as originally stated, rather than the 1,980 that's proposed in the amendment. Is there a second?
Elbers is second.
Seconded by Mr. Elbers. Discussion.
Just a clarification on the motion. Was the motion to include a Class D going down to 660?
Correct. Because it was my understanding that we wanted those to be different.
Class D then, the 660, is that your point?
Correct.
Did you understand that when you made the motion or seconded?
I didn't really get that one, but, but I'll second it with that.
All right. Just get it on the floor and now we'll have discussion. Okay. Toby, how does that work? Is that gonna work out as far as you're concerned?
I guess we're staff. We're not policymakers. That's up to the boards.
I didn't say you were.
Yeah.
I'm just asking, how does it work with your office?
With what? I mean, we would enforce a setback if it was reduced.
I think, Toby, the question.
No.
It will not at this time?
No.
Okay. So they would act upon it on this one?
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I have a, I have a couple comments. Mile off the T exit, half mile east and a half mile south. And when you start talking about stuff intruding on stuff, where I live, I used to have hogs. I used to raise about 3,000 head hogs a year. And I got rid of them a few years ago because I had so many people threatening just to sue me. I was basically in compliance. I was grandfathered in. But with all the guys, I live basically by Baker Crossing. The road I lived on when I moved there 40 years ago had five cars a day on. Now there's probably 150 trucks a day on that gravel road. So when people sit in this room and talk about somebody wanting to go down south and build a house, and they're impeding on somebody who wants to raise pigs a quarter mile away, I'd say let them smell the pigs. Because where I live, I'm fourth generation raising livestock. Basically, all my brothers are, we can't have hogs. We're lucky to have hu, cat, a few cattle where we are. And that, and the city impeded on us and basically shut us down. So there's two sides to every story here. I mean, I feel for some of the guys that live by hog units. I know what they're like. But in my opinion, if you're moving south to get out of Sioux Falls, you're giving up a bunch of rat race in Sioux Falls, and you're gonna have to put up with something somewhere, wherever you live. Now, that maybe isn't what you want. But you own two, three, four, five acres. This farmer owns a quarter or two or three quarters, 500 acres. Put his whole life in that quarter of ground, building a million-dollar hog house facility to raise it so his kids can come back. And all of a sudden, one guy that puts a house up a thousand feet away is gonna shut that all down? To me, that ain't right. Because he can build that house there. And in three, four years, if he don't like it, he can sell that house and move away. You can't sell your farm. You can't take your hog houses away. You can't take your cattle facilities away. Not very easy. It's gonna cost you millions and millions of dollars to do it. So when some people, when this, this is a, and this is a tough county. Because northern Lincoln County is basically Sioux Falls. And southern is, it's a different kind of, different situation down there, but there's, there's a lot of, a lot of facilities that can't go up just due to setbacks on a lot of stuff. And I've sat on this board for 10, 11 years. You know, I'm, I'm an alternate now. But like Don Huffman, if he wanted to do anything there now, I don't think he could do a thing. He's done. His, he maybe has son-in-law or grandkids that maybe want to take it over. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. I don't know. And he'll probably be shoved out after a while. You know, so, so when, so when I sit up here and listen to some of these people that move out in the country and complain about different things, I guess I look at, they moved out here. Now you gotta put up with stuff. And as, as you were talking about dust and all that stuff on the road, well legally, the way you're talking, you can't even drive down the road to get to your farm place because you're creating dust. I mean, how? I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just talking about what you talked about the whole time. So, but that's, that's just a few comments I have on here. So. Okay. I spoke my piece for a while.
Any other questions or comments? On the commission members? Wendy, do you have anything for the go-to-the-order?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm a little troubled by, by the amendment, with all due respect to my colleagues at the end of the table. Only because this, these setbacks as amended were proposed following some discussion on the part of the committee, as I understand it, maybe a little more than discussion. But to include an amendment to that, that is, amounts to half of what it was to beginning before the amendment is, to me, a little over the top. I would think at a minimum, it ought to be 1,320 feet for both. Both C and D, excuse me.
Which, which I'm perfectly fine with, but the comment was made, Chairman, that the, the whole reasoning for increasing the Class C to 1,980 was because it was the same as a Class D. And so if we want to take a Class C back to 1,320, and if everybody's fine with just leaving it that way, I'm fine with it. But otherwise, we have to take incremental steps. I mean, from Class C to a Class B is double, so why not from a Class D to a Class C we double? Personally, I don't think it matters if Class Cs and Class Ds are the same, but that was, that, that, that's been what's brought forward.
Does that motivate anybody to make a motion to amend the amendment, which was a part of? Eric's motion?
Well, I guess it's really up to Toby. Is it, I mean, is it necessary that we have that step down or can they both be the same? I guess.
Yeah, but Toby.
I guess that's what.
Excuse me, go ahead.
No, I guess that's what we really need to know. I mean, do we, does it have to have a step down?
Toby's answer is that his office doesn't set policy.
Okay, fine.
Did I answer that correctly?
Well, I think it's up to the board. I mean, it's, it's really, again, but I think, I think you said the right word is that we, we, we don't say it enough, but this is law. This is policy. It should really be some thorough, you know, thorough thought put into it and things like that. So you do have three options. You can, again, this was referred to you by the Board of Commissioners, so your options are to recommend approval back, recommend denial back, or recommend amendment back. So yes, you can recommend that it be amended in some form or not. But you have to take a vote on that at some point in time to see if that would pass, I guess, the board.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, and that includes amending what are before us in terms of amendments. That also, by amendments, that, that includes cutting Class C back from 1,980 to 1,320 feet. And Class D from 1,320 to 660. Any discussion, further discussion on that? If not, I'll call a roll.
I get. I think we should leave D at 1,320.
You want to make a motion?
Want to move to amend that? Make a motion to amend it?
I'll make a motion to amend, to amend D and put that back to 1,320 and Class C at 1,320 feet.
Is there a second?
All second, Scott.
Since that's amendment, I guess we have to vote on that first. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Joan called a roll.
So we're voting, we're voting.
We're voting strictly on the amendment to include Class C and D at 1,320.
Okay.
Commissioner Scott?
Yay.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yay.
Commissioner Elbers?
Yay.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yay.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Pashby?
Yay. Okay, now on the entire motion, any further discussion? The entire motion, of course, including now Class C and D at 1,320 feet. If not, no discussion, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Scott?
Yay.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yeah.
Commissioner Elbers?
Yay.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yay.
Commissioner Poppins?
Epstein.
Commissioner Pashby?
Yay.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have. Let's take care of those amendments. Toby?
Yeah, so just for the public's benefit, that, that recommendation of the ordinance will move forward to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing as well. I don't have a time, time for that. But there will be public comment on that, and the board will conduct a first and second reading on that proposed ordinance.
Any discussion by the commission members for issues that are not on the agenda? Anything whatsoever?
Mr. Chairman, you had an item before that, so item number, old business.
I didn't think I did.
Yep.
What was that, Toby?
The consideration of the bylaws amendment.
Oh, the bylaws amendment. I'm sorry, go ahead. I knew you wanted to talk about that, but go ahead.
I don't want to talk about it, but it's on your agenda that we have to talk about it, so. So this was tabled at the last month's meeting. But it has been modified since that original amendment was put forward. So there was, originally, last month, there was two parts to this. The incoming Board of Commissioners representative requested the State Attorney's Office and staff to develop a draft amendment to the bylaws for the Planning Commission to, to, to add language that the, that the commissioner, the, the commission representative would be the chair and would abstain from voting. That amendment has been removed by the party, so that isn't for consideration this evening. The only amendment for consideration this evening is an amendment to the meeting agenda. And the first parts of it is just really clarification. We're breaking out the call-to-order. That'll be a call by the chair. And then the roll-call vote will, will just be that to determine if there's a quorum, so that'll be two items. And then just some capitalization on the next two items. And then really changing the wording of public input on non-agenda items, it just kind of, it's, it's the same that we have for the joint jurisdiction language. It's just kind of a simpler language to add on to the agenda. And then move old business to the top, so if we table an item, we would, we would handle that item first and then, and then go into public hearings. And so conduct public hearings, and then again, old business would be moved before public hearings. And then we have an item for open discussion for, for commission members for issues not on the agenda. And then also report of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners' representation if necessary. And so we, we have those as standing items on the agenda. I've talked to a number of views that these meetings go quite lengthy. If there's a way we could streamline it, do the public's business and get that taken care of. If there's items that you would like to address, we can add that as new business. You would just contact staff. But we wouldn't have a standing item on the agenda that, that we would stumble over in the, in the midst. in the midst of the meetings and things like that. And then new business would really just be there and then adjournment. So it's really, as a part to just streamline the agenda. Not saying I don't mind being here, but I think a lot of the times, the public sitting through these lengthy meetings and we just want to make sure we do their business first and foremost.
What do you need, a motion on this?
So again, these are the Planning Commission bylaws, they're your operating procedures. These don't go before the Board of County Commissioners, these are strictly yours. So as proposed tonight, you can, yes, you can amend these bylaws if you so choose or if you want to change them, amend them, or add other things to it.
Get the matter on the table, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, Scott.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Elbers?
Moved by Scott, seconded by Elbers, that we approve the recommended changes. Any discussion? Hearing none, Joan, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yay.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yeah.
Commissioner Elbers?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yay.
Commissioner Poppins?
Epstein.
Commissioner Pashby?
Yay.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's still on the old agenda then, is it not? Open discussion for members, county commission members, or excuse me, planning commission members, for issues not on the agenda. Anybody have anything for the good of the order? Seeing none? Move on to, and we've been waiting for this all evening, I know he's worked hard on it. Even had a dress rehearsal last night, as I understand it. Mr. Poppins, would you give us a report from the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners?
Well, thank you for that. I should have read the fine print in the last part of the agenda item, but things are moving along pretty aggressively at the county level. There's a committee working on facility assessment on the courthouse. I think they've held two meetings so far, not quite, have not had an update from that for, as today was a day off for us. But there's a lot of things, trying to stay abreast of what's going on out in the state right now. But things are pretty good. State's in pretty solid economic condition, which has allowed a lot of things to keep going in the state. I will tell you that, quite proud of being part of this state. I have a daughter in Los Angeles, California, and that state is in trouble. So commend all of our legislators and leaders of our state to keep us economically going. There's a lot of debate on out there what should be going or not be going on, but I tell you, economically, we're in a much better situation than much of the other parts of the country. I talked to many leaders and private individuals in the housing market. People are flocking here. We are going to see expanded growth beyond, I think, our belief. And they're coming because it's a good place to live. People are good, solid individuals, and we should be proud of that, every one of us. But thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Last item on the agenda is election of planning commission officers for the following year. I will tell you that this discussion started almost a year ago, sometime in March, as I recall. Toby and I were discussing my resignation and for reasons that will be too long to explain here, we agreed to put it off until finally, I guess it is, my successor is located. I think that's in the process, as I understand it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Toby. So I have submitted my resignation, subject to that, what I just stated, we need to elect down a new chairman and a new vice chairman. I will tell you this, only by way of information for what has transpired in the past, as I recall, and Ron can correct me if I'm wrong, it's been a result of who has the most tenure in terms of who the chairman will be. And the chairman, I guess, is not limited to any term. I know the chairman have served in the past for two or three years personally. And I, again, I'm leaving, boys, so ignore me if you want, but I like the county commission's way of handling this, and that's to rotate year by year. So I only submit that to you for something to think about. But we'll need a chairman and a vice chairman. And if you choose to go along that basis, if I have this correctly, my memory tells me that Jerry Jangling was on first and then Eric Scott. And so it would be those two respectively, chairman and vice chairman, if you're willing or if you would want to go along with my recommendation.
That is an hollowed in. When I got on, I got vice chairman right away.
He wasn't there at the meeting either, so.
I think whoever replaces you just has to take your job. And nobody, nobody understands why you got on there for twenty-some years or whatever.
I was on there for eight, over eight. I took somebody's place with health, health issues. I got appointed and then, then I got, after that, after his term, I got put on eight more years. But I was only chairman for, I was vice chairman for two years and then chairman for two years. That's how it was back then. But I mean, you nominated whoever you wanted to nominate, but that's just kind of how it fell in the process. But I'm not even up for that, so.
Well, I know it was money after.
Because I'm, I'm just an alternate here tonight, so.
I think, do we, do we have to do anything tonight?
Yes.
Well, it's been the practice of the past to do this at the February meeting.
What is?
Is that in the bylaws?
Yes, the bylaws state that.
They don't ask me here to get nominated.
I was going to say, is Jerry aware of this or?
Jerry's aware of it.
Is he aware of it and is he okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll nominate.
I won't say that, but yeah.
Pardon me?
I, I don't know that for sure, I guess, but.
I don't know it for sure.
Okay, all right.
So do you need a nomination?
Yes.
I'll nominate Jerry Jangling to be the chairperson of the commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there a nominee for vice chairman?
I'll nominate Scott, Ms. Hogan.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Can we hear that the nomination ceases and that those two be cast or be elected by unanimous ballot? Is there a motion in that regard? Don't move. Is there a second?
I'll second, Ron Elbers.
Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Scott?
Yay.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yay.
Commissioner Elbers?
Yay.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yay.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Poppins?
Yay.
And Commissioner Pashby?
Yay.
I think, I think we should thank Commissioner Pashby. Commissioner Namega resigned a month ago, so we didn't get a chance to thank her. But as Gary mentioned, is that he did stay on a year longer than he really wanted to stay on. And staff appreciates that. Gary has always been responsive to what is going on in the agenda, always checks on items and does a good job of running the meeting. So from staff, I'll say thank you, Mr. Pashby. Wish you well.
Thank you very much. I want you to know that I've appreciated my time on this commission. It's, I retired at the end of 2014 and it's given me something to do and something to keep my brain hopefully working a little bit. I will say this on behalf, or for the staff. Toby, of course, is on the forefront and everybody knows the time and effort he puts into it, but Joan Das does not get that much credit and she does a heck of a lot of work. I know I can, virtually any issue, I can talk to her if Toby's not available. And she needs to be commended as well, so my thanks to the two of you and I think everybody shares in that. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll do a motion to adjourn, Ms. Hogan.
Is there a second?
Second, Elbers.
No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.